We'll call this second meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Urbana City Council, Monday, April 2nd, 2018. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Council members, Ammons, Brown, Hazen, Jacobson, Miller, Roberts, Wu, Mayor Marlin.
Here. Next up is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. These are from March 19th and March 26th. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jared. I'm going to give it to Mary Alice this time. Any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? We have public input. I have cards from Eric Hyatt and Chris Hazel. Speaking for the Urbana J.C.s. You have up to five minutes.
My name is Eric Hyatt, and I am president of the Champaign-Urbana J.C.s.
My name is Chris Hazel. I'm secretary of the Champaign.
We would like to take this opportunity to introduce our organization to the area. The Champaign-Urbana J.C.s was just chartered by the Illinois J.C.s just last month. The J.C.s is a nonprofit organization that provides individuals 18 to 41 the opportunity to get involved in their community, meet new people, and expand their professional development and leadership skills. The social networking opportunities the J.C.s provide young professionals can make individuals feel more engaged with their community. There are several J.C.s chapters all around the state. When I moved here last year, I was surprised to learn there wasn't a chapter in this area. There was one that dissolved 15 years ago. It was created way back in 1940. I, along with several young professionals within the community, started the planning process to recharter the organization.
The J.C.s are part of a Junior Chamber International with nearly 200,000 active members and over 5 million alumni, including several world leaders. J.C. chapters have built parks, playgrounds, established community festivals, and raised millions for local charities. JCI empowers each local chapter to engage and active young people to take ownership of their communities. And as a new organization, we've done just that so far. One of our first socials before becoming chartered, we held a winter clothing drive where we donated winter clothing and monetary donation to big brothers, big sisters of Champaign County.
I moved here from Springfield, and to give you a sense of what Springfield J.C.s does, what we hope to do in Urbana and Champaign, we have done community festivals ranging from fireworks celebrations, we've donated water fountains to local parks, volunteered for local charities, conducted parades, and we can hope that we can find projects that benefit the community in Urbana.
We're excited to build this chapter here in Champaign-Urbana community. We ask that you share a group to those that might be more interested in getting involved in the community. We currently have around 12 members which are just becoming active within the last few weeks. When we hope to extend our membership bases, we grow and work on projects within the community. Our website, which currently just links to our Facebook page, is www.cujcs.com, where we will be posting upcoming events and meetings. We have a general membership meeting the second Thursday of the month. This month, we are meeting April 12th at El Toro on Springfield Avenue in Champaign until we find a permanent meeting location. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Question.
Dennis.
Yeah. Guys, thanks for coming. This is great news. It's always good to see youthful leadership in the community. I mean, it brings a breath of fresh air. So there's a project that we're just initiating this week. It's under planning, but there might be a place for you to participate, and that's the creation of a Boneyard Creek multi-use pathway between the downtown and the campus. So I would invite you to talk to Lori Pearson or Marcus Ricci on our planning staff to learn more about it, maybe at a future meeting or as soon as you get your group together and want to blast off somewhere. I mean, we could provide you with something to think about.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you. Eric.
So I'm going to beat my colleague to the left of me to this point and say, and thank you in advance for doing what I know you're going to do, and in your outreach, be sure to do it in such a way that you're going to have racial, ethnic, and gender diversity.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have input cards from Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood. They wish to state that they're continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. We also have a card from Elderess Melinda Carr, and she expresses continued concerns about Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity, and historic impact. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? I have cards from three other individuals who want to speak at the time of the ordinance. Okay. Any unfinished business? There's none. Reports of standing committees. We have two items from the Committee of the Whole. Jared?
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I'm going to move Resolution Number 2018-03-012R, a resolution accepting a distracted driving grant from the Illinois Department of Transportation with amended verbiage from the last meeting for approval.
A second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? Aaron?
Yeah, I just really wanted to get some further clarity on what qualifies as distracted. I've had a few questions come to me. I don't know if Sylvia is able to answer those questions. That would be helpful. I should say Chief Morgan.
The majority of the distracted driving will be cellphone use. I hate to say that's 100% of it, but I can't think of anything else off the top of my head that it would be, that's the main focus is for people that are on their cell phones has become obviously a big issue. People like to hold their phone out here and have it on speaker, and they think that's hands-free because they have it on the speaker. I see it all the time, but unfortunately, that's not what hands-free means.
So Lieutenant Fitzgerald spoke last time. I keep forgetting if it's lieutenant or sergeant, but anyway, he was saying something about seat belts, and I asked a question about somebody putting on makeup. I really wanted to have an idea because it seems to be a wide variety of different things that it could be. So I appreciate the cellphone is the primary.
It is the primary focus of this and probably one of the leading reasons why the grant was come about. But again, I suppose if somebody were driving and putting their makeup on, looking in the mirror, putting on mascara, yeah, I think that you could make a case that that is distracted driving, but the overwhelming majority of them will be cellphone use.
So just in the interest of gender equity, I would imagine that shaving would also count.
Thank you.
Yes.
I was just trying to make sure, because people were asking a couple of different questions. I appreciate that.
This grant is for a total of $6,300. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sammons.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes. That motion passes. Mr. Miller will be recusing himself.
Yes. Pursuant to the Illinois Labor Control Act of 1934, I will not be able to move the following ordinance forward, but I believe my compadre Dean Hazen is going to move in my stead. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. On behalf of Committee of the Whole, I will move ordinance Number 2018-03-024 with recommendations for approval, an ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 22, city tax on beer keg sales to distributors.
A second.
So it moved by Dean, seconded by Bill. And to clarify, this is actually exempting beer keg sales to distributors from the local food and beverage tax. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sammons.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you very much. Reports of special committees. Reports of officers. Bill Gray, Public Works.
Yeah, just one item I wanted to share. There's already been some information sent out, but Illinois Department of Transportation will be doing roadwork on Interstate 74 between here and St. Joe starting this week. So it's a million in resurfacing and related work, and they'll be down one lane in each direction, so there may be delays during, depending on the time of day, and the work is expected to last until mid-November. So I would say expect delays and all extra time if you're heading east or anywhere between here and St. Joe. Just wanted to report that.
And other reports from staff?
I did want to share the information that I'll be joining a number of other people at a roundtable with Congressman Rodney Davis tomorrow morning. This is being organized by Visit Champaign County. The focus of the roundtable is on tourism, visitation, and economic impact related to that. And we'll also be touring the central, the bakery on First Street in Champaign, Illinois Bakery, I believe. Okay. New business. We have three items before us. One is ordinance Number 2018-04-026, an ordinance approving major variance for 312 West Elm Street. This is ZBA case numbers 2018, MAGO1, 2018, MAJO2, O3, and O4 and O5. Kevin Garcia will present.
Good evening. Okay, so this is, as was just stated, this is a series of variances that are requested by the St. Nicholas Orthodox Church for their building at 312 West Elm Street. On the purpose of the request is to accommodate a larger congregation that the church now has, to make the building handicap accessible, and to redesign the building in an architectural style that's common to Orthodox churches. The Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on these cases on March 21st, and they voted four to zero in favor of recommending approval of these requests to the city council. In addition, there was also, the design was also reviewed and approved by the MOR Development Review Board on March 1st of this year. This property is in the MOR district, so it had to go through that review board as well. At both the MOR Development Review Board and at the zoning board meetings, there was no public comment, and I did want to point out the MOR board was also a unanimous vote to approve the design of the project. This property is located on the corner of Birch and Elm Streets. The church owns three separate parcels there. You'll see the westernmost one along Birch Street on the corner of Birch and Elm is where the church building is, and then the church parking lot takes up the other two parcels there. You'll note that the church building looks like it's very close to the western property line. That's because it's about six feet from that property line. To describe the variance requests, you can follow along in your memos on Page 2, and also on Exhibit, I believe it's Exhibit C in your council packets. So the first one is to increase the building height from, or the maximum building height. The maximum allowed is 35 feet in the district. They're asking for a building that's a few feet taller than that. That's really for architectural reasons to allow this tower, which is common to Orthodox churches. And the tower would be set back from the edge of the building, so it would not be imposing on folks if they're walking by on Birch Street. It's also set back from the rear of the building, so it wouldn't be imposing on the alley on that taller part. The second request is for an increase in the maximum floor area ratio. And I wanted to point out that floor area ratio calculations include floor area that's in basements, including basements that are entirely below grade. So the proposed building would essentially look like a one-story building with an effective floor area ratio of under .5, which would allow it to comply with the zoning ordinance. But since we do include basements in those calculations, they require a variance for that. The third request is to decrease the open space, the minimum open space ratio. And again, similar to the floor area ratio calculations, basements are also included in this calculation. If they weren't included, this would meet the regulations, no variance would be required. However, since they do have a basement, the variance is requested. The fourth variance request is to allow the building to encroach into the required front yard. Since this is a corner building, it has front yards on both Elm Street and Birch Street. Already, it encroaches 10 and 1/2 feet into the yard along Birch Street, and this request is to allow it to extend another 6 inches into that yard. That would just be the roof that would be overhanging a further 6 inches. The last request is to allow AC units to encroach into the side yard. The existing units are right around here, if you can see the hand on the screen in front of you. Since they'll be, since they would like to put an addition on the east side, they'd like to move the AC units to the north, which would be better just from an efficiency standpoint because their mechanical room is on the north side of the building there. So that's a summary of the requested variances. And one final note before I move on to the criteria. There was a public outreach meeting that the church held on January 24th of this year. They invited members from the, residents from the surrounding neighborhood. They also posted an invitation on the Westerbanna Neighborhood Association listserv, and just one person attended that informational meeting. So for the variance criteria, I don't want to go through each of these in order. If you want to look at the details, you can read those, starting on the bottom of Page 3 of the staff memo. But I did want to summarize the findings of the staff analysis. We don't feel that the variance, or we feel that the variance request will not serve as a special privilege to the property owner. They were, the requests are not the result of a situation knowingly created by the petitioner. They will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. They will not cause a nuisance to adjacent property owners, and they generally represent the minimum deviations necessary from the requirements of the zoning ordinance. As I mentioned earlier, the Zoning Board of Appeals unanimously voted four to zero to forward the cases to the city council with recommendation to approve the requests. Staff likewise recommends the same. That concludes my report, and I can take any questions if you have them.
Bill?
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. There was one letter that was opposed to, and I remember when that was sent, because they copied the neighborhood email list, too. That was before the public, no, that was after the public meeting, but they hadn't gone to the public meeting. I was the only one, I was the one who attended that one. But I think they had probably just read the sign or something about, or they read some information about all the variances being requested, and I think the one that stood out the most forum was that 11-foot encroachment into the required 15-foot front yard. And just point out that that's because it's on a corner, and there's two front yards, and the encroachment is really just the extension of the existing line on the west side. So it's not really what we would consider the front yard, probably because that's not the side of the street you look at it from. But I think, I didn't hear any more from them after that. I think you explained it to them, and I explained it to them, and I wondered if you heard any more, if they were more satisfied with that.
No, we haven't heard anything else from them. I did send them an email to explain it. The way that we have to write the legal notices, it's not always clear what's going on, so sometimes it does take more explanation. And I think on the staff level, we've been trying to, lately, we've been trying to send out more information with letters, you know, with notice of public hearings. In this case, we didn't do that, but we did send letters later that explained, and that included this graphic that's in front of you to give more information.
And I think the porch addition is really going to be attractive, the open porch now adds a lot to the neighborhood. Thanks.
Any other questions? I do have one member of the public who wishes to make comments, so after the council finishes with questions, then we'll do public input, and then discussion can continue. Mary Alice?
I have a question about parking. So it looks like there's 36 parking slots right now, and what would the building be in terms of capacity, the maximum capacity?
That's a good question. I did not, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but they would, the zoning ordinance would require less than 36 spaces, so there...
So three, it's five, is it right? Five people in church, five seats taken in church to one parking space? Is that right for churches? So 180 would be max?
Yeah, that's correct.
So I assume that there's 180 people or less that are allowed to be in the building at one time?
Judging, or just looking at the plans that they have and counting the seats for the interior, the 36 spaces are enough. And I do know that they could get additional spaces if they needed it from, I think, Bucy Bank. I think they have a reciprocal agreement with them, because they allow employees to park in the church parking lot now because they, well, actually, right now, before they expand the building, they don't use most of those spaces at any time of the week, but certainly not during business hours.
So did they mention, because they want to expand it based on the congressional, the fact that the congregation has expanded, did they say to what number?
No, and I didn't ask that.
Okay. Have there been any complaints in the neighborhood about parking during church hours?
I have heard none, and it sounds like they have plenty of parking to accommodate their congregation right now.
I have an additional answer. Looking at the floor plan, it appears as though there's 154 seats shown in the Assembly Room.
Okay, thank you. Any other technical questions? Dennis?
The facade image, which shows the tower and the general layout of the building, which I think was your first illustration, has a kind of an anomaly, and that's the white, very acute triangle just on the roof of the door facing the main street, I guess that's Elm Street. Is that flashing, or do you know what that element is? Out of curiosity, it looks...
Oh, I think that's just, that might just be an artifact of when I transferred this over from the PDF they had sent me. It's kind of hard to edit things in Acrobat sometimes, and sometimes you lose graphic pieces. So that's the first I've noticed that.
Okay. I will say that the, it looks visually to be such a great improvement, and it's more identifiable as a religious body or building, and I think that's a real plus, and I appreciate the fact that their congregation has increased.
Okay, we'll take input from the public. Phil Fisella, he wanted to speak on this.
I have the wrong...
You just want 713?
Yes.
Okay. You wrote them both down. Okay. We'll hold off. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
It's your word, Glenn.
Oh, yeah, right, right. We have the church board. I will move this ordinance, I will move passage of this ordinance.
I'll second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Jared. Any further discussion? Was it Dean? You guys do sound alike. Moved by Eric, seconded by Dean.
Yep.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Ammons.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And Wu?
Yes. That motion passes. Next up is ordinance Number 2018-04-027, an ordinance approving a special use permit for 713 West Ohio Street, Fratlife LLC. This is Plan Case 2328-SU18. Marcus Ricci will present this case for the city. So we'll do staff presentation, then we'll take public comment, and then we'll have council discussion.
Good evening, members of city council. Fratlife LLC, represented by its manager and sole member Jonah Weiskopf, has applied for a special use permit to adaptively reuse a portion of the existing dormitory at 713 West Ohio Street as a church, and the remaining portion of the existing dormitory would be used as a rooming house, which is permitted by right in the R7 University Residential District. The church would operate in designated portions of the principal structure while the rooming house would operate in other portions. The applicant is the current owner of the property and is applying on behalf of the church in Champaign, represented by two of its directors, Kenneth Mooney and Nehemiah Tan. Mr. Weiskopf and Mr. Tan are present here at the meeting tonight. The Plan Commission, public hearing was opened on February 8th and continued to February 22nd. The Urbana Plan Commission voted four ayes to one nay to forward the case to the city council with recommendation to approve the request for a special use permit with conditions. We'll zoom in a little bit. Exhibit A shows that the property is located at the southeast corner of West Ohio Street, and South Bucy Avenue is currently the site of the Delta Kappa Epsilon Fraternity House. We have West Ohio Street. Lincoln Avenue is further to the west, and South Bucy Avenue runs along the west side of the property. The site is 22,000 square feet and includes the 2 and 1/2-story house and a 25-space parking lot. There are currently 18 tenants in a 21-bedroom home, and the parking lot has two access drives off of South Bucy Avenue. Exhibit B shows that the surrounding land is, the current subject property land is owned University Residential R7, which extends to the west and up along South Lincoln Avenue, as well as some spots of University R7. And it is in an area that is primarily R2, single-family residential, and there's also some R5 spots in the neighborhood. Current land uses include single and multifamily residential and group homes, which includes rooming houses, boarding houses, and dormitories. There are three other group homes on this block of Ohio Street, which is shown on Exhibit C, plus an additional seven group homes in the adjacent blocks. Here we have the Delta Kappa House, which is the subject of the request. We have a group home here owned by 4JD, and then we have all of these other group homes along Lincoln Avenue, as well as the Delta Zeta House across the street, Beta Sigma Psi and Chi Psi across the street. The house was constructed in 1927 and has always operated as a sorority or fraternity house. Occupancy has been slowly dropping from a recent high of 22 residents down to 10 residents. The occupancy then increased to 18 residents when the building changed owners and left certified housing status with the university. This is an example of an older, larger chapter house experienced decreasing occupancy rates. Some chapter houses are able to maintain their occupancy rates and continue as a university-recognized chapter house. Other chapter houses lose occupancy and change uses, some as university-recognized fraternal organizations, and others as rooming houses operated by private entities. For the z, subject property, adaptive reuse as a mixed-use church and rooming house would better utilize the building. A recent example of adaptive reuse is the former Zeta Tau House, which has been vacant since two thousand nine and in disrepair. Last year, Pierre Moulin was approved for a planned unit development to adaptively reuse the chapter house as an eighteen-unit apartment building, and construction work for that renovation is currently underway. The services for the Church in Champagne are currently held at the Illini Union. Increasing attendance levels have prompted church leaders to search for a site nearer the university where they could move their congregation, two-thirds of which are university students. The staff report lists the proposed service and meeting times. Although the meeting times start as early as eight-thirty a.m. and eight, as late as ten p.m., the actual daily activity periods average less than four-and-a-half hours a day due to periods of non-service time between morning and evening services. The applicant plans to maintain tenant occupation until it sells the property to the church. The prospective buyer plans to reduce tenant occupation when they take possession of the building, renting ten of the existing bedrooms to individual tenants starting in August of twenty-eighteen. Church renovation is projected to begin in late twenty-eighteen. In Exhibit E, uh, which I'm reusing our Plan Commission exhibit, um, this shows that two-thirds of the building would be used for church activities. The church activities are shown in red, and shared activities are shown in purple, and residential activities are shown in blue. So this is the basement here, the majority of the building is used by the church. The kitchen and pantry are shared. On the first floor, it's one-hundred percent church use. On the second floor, uh, the western portion is for the church, and the eastern portion is bedrooms, roughly a sixty-forty split, and then on the third floor is one-hundred percent residential usage. City staff preliminarily determined that occupancy loads for the areas of church use and residential use, as well as an occupancy load for the main assembly hall by itself, estimated that the church areas of the building could safely contain up to two-hundred-and-forty-eight persons. The main assembly hall alone could safely contain up to a hundred and eight persons, and that is Exhibit F, which is shown on your screen. The site plan shows the proposed access ramp, off-street lot reconfiguration, parking lot landscaping, and parking lot shade trees. Uh, this is an overview of the site plan with a zoom into the northern portion, which is the building, and the southern portion, which is the twenty-two-space parking lot. The plan proposes twenty-two parking spaces exceeding the number that is required by the zoning ordinance. If overflow parking is ever required, church patrons can park two blocks away at McKinley Health Center's Lot F-eleven, um, at eleven oh-nine South Lincoln Avenue. This lot is open to the public from Friday at five p.m. to Monday at six a.m. If overflow parking is required outside of those times, church attendees can use the metered spaces in that parking lot. Uh, staff did analyze the service times of other nearby houses of worship to determine any potential overlaps in traffic congestion or use of on-street or off-street parking, and determined that the only conflict would be with Twin City Bible Church's, uh, Sunday services, which run from nine to ten fifteen a.m. and from ten forty-five to twelve noon. To confirm whether or not there would be a conflict, I conducted a parking survey on Sunday, February fourth, to determine the current use of that parking lot by Twin City Bible Church. On this day, uh, the peak occupancy during Twin City Bible Church surfaces was fifty percent, leaving sixty-nine spaces available for others to park in. Uh, in theory, if every one of the eighty attendees at the proposed church drove and ten of the twenty-two spaces on-site were used by the residents in the proposed building, the remaining sixty-eight church attendees may have had room to park in the McKinley Health Center parking lot. This is speculation based on several assumptions, but I also did not attempt to account for the walkers and cyclists, which would have further reduced the number needing to park off-site. The public service assessment by Brad Bennett, Assistant City Engineer, is summarized in the staff report and included as Exhibit H. He determined that impacts to water and sanitary sewer service would be beneficial due to the overall reduced occupancy, and that the traffic impact would be nominal with modest additional traffic on South Bucie or West Ohio Street when events end. Uh, church representatives, Mooney and Tan, Tan, held a public outreach meeting on December twelfth, which over twenty people attended. A summary is provided in the staff report. Three items of note from that meeting. Uh, first, that the church's parent organization's growth pattern is not to increase the size of any one congregation, but to increase the numbers of small congregations established in local communities. Second, that one of the church's primary missions is to provide support to students. That is why, uh, members want to be located close to campus, why they work with the Christian on-campus Registered Student Organization, and their plans to host several students as residents. And third, if the church is permitted to establish the church at the subject property, it would change the name to the Church in Urbana. During the meeting, current owner Jonah Weiskopf stated that the proposed church and rooming house uses would be a less intense use than the current use as an eighteen-person fraternity house. In total, between the public outreach meeting and letters submitted to, uh, Plan Commission, twenty persons have expressed support for the proposal, and ten persons have expressed opposition. These are included in Exhibit I. Concerns expressed by those in opposition included increases in traffic congestion and parking, light trespass from the parking lot lights, difficulty in enforcement of occupancy limits, managing noise, and future maintenance of the property. These concerns were discussed in the staff report, and many will be addressed by recommended conditions on the special use permit. The zoning ordinance sets the number of required spaces based on the two proposed uses, the church and the rooming house use. The church use requires sixteen spaces for the eighty-seat main assembly room and five spaces for the ten residents, for a total of twenty-one car parking spaces. The site plan indicates twenty-two parking spaces would be provided. Although the occupancy load calculations estimate that, that the building can safely contain higher numbers of people, the prospective buyer is willing to accept a lower occupancy limit. The building official and fire marshal are permitted to set a building's occupancy or a room's occupancy at a lower number than what the building code formula would allow, which is what is proposed by Conditions Two and Three, which would limit the occupancy in both the assembly room and for the church use as a whole. Staff determined that the special use permit and any recommended conditions applies only to the six thousand forty-eight square feet of the building designated for church use. Uh, we worked with building safety staff to determine those building occupancy loads, as well as an occupancy load for the main assembly hall. The permit and its conditions would apply only to the portion of the building designated for church use and would transfer to any future property owner. If the proposed or future use does not conform generally to the site and floor plans submitted for this permit, the permit would no longer be valid, and any church use must cease. If the conditions of the permit are violated, including the occupancy, exceeding the occupancy limits set forth in the permit's conditions, the zoning administrator may revoke or cancel the special use permit. And finally, if the occupancy limits established by the certificate of occupancy are exceeded, the building official may revoke the certificate of occupancy, requiring that portion of the building in violation to be vacated. The city's Noise and Vibrations Ordinance regulates noise, but also exempts religious worship activities. However, non-worship activities, including movement of meeting attendees in the parking lot, assure, after worship or meeting activities, would not be accepted and must meet reasonable noise levels in the noise ordinance. Uh, staff research regarding the clarification of the zoning district, the history of regulation of churches, as well as the past application of conditions placed on special use permits for churches is included in the staff report. The staff report reviewed how the proposed use met the required criteria. First, that the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at this location due to its proximity to Lincoln Avenue and the university. Second, that the proposed use will not be reasonably, unreasonably injurious to the public at this location, because the church would relocate its services from the Illini Union to this property, and the staggered service times should minimize conflicts of traffic with other nearby houses of worship, except for the final service dismissal. In addition, the proposed church will provide one off-street parking space more than is required. All services should be finished by ten p.m., and the applicants state that there will be no alcohol consumption, late-night parties, or loud music. And third, that the character of the R-seven district will be preserved if the proposed special use permit is granted. The property has been used as a fraternity or sorority since the late nineteen twenties, and although Sunday services may bring additional traffic for a short period of time, the applicants believe, based on their experience at the Illini Union, that many attendees will walk, bike, carpool, or take the bus to services. They will provide more than the required number of bicycle and automobile parking spaces, and will fully screen the parking lot as required. The City Council may impose additional conditions and requirements on the operation of the proposed use, and these are laid out in the staff report. Staff initially proposed six conditions to Plan Commission, three of which were designed to address conditions, uh, concerns that arose at the neighborhood meeting on December twelfth. These are included in the Plan Commission minutes. Two conditions addressed limiting the occupancy of the assembly room and the special use portion of the building, and the third addressed spillover lighting in the parking lot. Because other city codes address potential noise and lighting issues, staff now proposes four conditions to address compliance with regulations. The findings are summarized in the staff report. And the options to the City Council are to approve the special use permit without any additional conditions, to approve the special use permit with any conditions deemed appropriate, or to deny the special use permit. At its February twenty-second meeting, the Plan Commission voted four ayes and one nay to forward Plan Case Number Twenty-three Twenty-eight SU-18 to the Urbana City Council with recommendation of approval with six conditions that are listed in the staff report. As discussed earlier, city staff conducted additional research and on the history of the issuance of special use permits to religious institutions and the types of conditions that have been applied. Due the, due to the ability of managing certain issues such as non-worship activity, noise, and light trespass, staff now recommends, thank you. Staff now recommends approval with the following recommended conditions for the proposed special use permit, which are on your screen there. Construction must be in general conformance with the attached site plan. The occupancy of the main church assembly room will be established and placarded by the building official and fire marshal to not exceed eighty persons and noted on the certificate of occupancy. The occupancy of the special use part, portion of the building, including the main church assembly room, will be established and placarded by the building official and fire marshal to not exceed ninety persons and noted on the certificate of occupancy. And the use must conform to all applicable zoning, building, and development regulations. And planning staff concur with this recommendation of the Plan Commission. That is the end of the staff report. Um, and Mr. Tan and Mr. Weiskopf are here to make comments and present, and answer questions.
I would suggest we hear from the public and Mr. Tan first, and then open it up for questions and discussions. Thanks, Marcus. So we have a card from Nehemiah Tan.
Mayor Marlin, City Council members, good evening. I'm Nehemiah Tan. Uh, I'm a resident in Urbana, and I represent, uh, the directors of the Church in Champagne. We're seeking to, uh, purchase, uh, seven thirteen, uh, West Ohio Street, Urbana. Uh, with its proximity to both the campus and community, we feel, um, that this building in this location matches our mission, uh, to support the spiritual growth of the present members and the students and the, uh, university-affiliated people. For the past four months, we have worked hand-in-hand with the city planner, uh, the Plan Commission, and West Urbana neighbors to draft a set of condition toward the approval of the special use permit for the potential meeting place and rooming house for the church in Urbana. For us, it was truly a very positive and constructive, uh, process and experience. And having gone through this collaborative, uh, process, we really feel that all of these city planner staff conditions, uh, that was set for, uh, are, are reasonable and achievable and reflect our aspiration to be a positive impact in our community. We are also sensitive to the concerns raised by our neighbors during the process, and their input has greatly informed the drafting of these proposed conditions. We would like to emphasize that we intend to maintain positive relations with our neighbors, just as we have maintained positive relations with the university where our Sunday morning services has been taking place for over fifteen years. If approved, we truly intend to comply with all these conditions, as recommended by the Plan Commission, and to maintain full compliance with the ordinances required by the city of Urbana. I'm joined tonight by members of our congregation, as well as neighbors, uh, who are not among our congregants, who unite in favor, uh, the approval of this permit under the proposed condition. Thank you, Mayor, and council members, for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Eric?
So in our packet, one of the, um, couple of communications from the public had to do not with this property, but with a property on West Michigan. And I don't, it's not, all that I know is what I read in the packet, so I don't know. Maybe you can clarify, uh, to what extent is the management or administration of the two properties, uh, are, do they, to what extent do they overlap, or do they have in common, or how independent are those two situations?
Uh, the property at eight-eleven, uh, we are, um, it was actually a, uh, owned by someone from California, and we are, um, essentially helping him to manage that property. We're facilitator here locally. And, uh, so we, uh, and also, right now, it's a rooming for, uh, for, um, four of our brothers, our students.
So, so as far as the, you know, committing resources to the upkeep of that, that's really the responsibility of the absentee owner, as opposed to anybody local, is that correct?
Correct. Right. And, uh, this, uh, property in seven thirteen will be different, because, um, there will be a, the local board of directors, uh, will oversee, and then the staff, uh, oversee the maintenance and repair of this building. And there are actually budgets that are set for, of about eighteen thousand dollars a, a year, for, set, set aside for remit, repair and maintenance. So this is, uh, uh, the difference in this, in this scenario.
And I guess I have another question, which actually is maybe jointly to you and to Mr. Simon, uh, because we, we, um, you will have, uh, living units in the, in the property. And, and so the question is, my question is, uh, will those be for, you know, available to members, only to members of your church, or will there be any sort of religious test? members -- only to members of your church, or will there be any sort of religious test? And to Mr. Simon, is that okay if the property is actually owned by a church and part of it is operated as a church? Is it all right to require some religious qualifications to rent the units?
Yes, it really is no different than a fraternity or sorority requiring membership in the organization to reside in the chapter house.
Any other questions for Mr. Tan? Okay, thank you. We have Phil Fasella.
Thank you. I'm Phil Fasella, 505 West Green, Champaign. Sorry, I'm too loud. So, I guess last fall bought 701 West Ohio, just down the street. We've poured several hundred thousands of dollars into it remodeling it. So, I invested in the neighborhood. And I am excited about this potential development for a couple of reasons. I guess one of the things I've heard from some of the other neighbors is they're concerned once this is passed, it could be any kind of a religious institution. So, you know, today, we're talking about Christians, but it could be other different religious groups. And my concern with leaving it the way it is is right now, it's a fraternity house and down the road, it could be other types of group housing. Like, we know for a fact that this particular group that we're somewhat comfortable with is leaving at the end of August. And I'm a lot more afraid of a large rooming house that could be any particular property manager, any particular rental company renting to a fraternity, renting to just random groups of people. I don't want to have that question mark on the corner, you know, down the street from a very nice home and many other people's very nice homes. I think this is an awesome reuse for a building that is probably never going to get back the traditional, you know, fraternity or sorority with a live-in-house mother. You know, a lot of those fraternities are kind of moving to more modern, you know, single-bedroom rooms on campus, close to the bars. They don't really want to be out in our neighborhood. I just -- and we don't want to see the whole building redeveloped and torn down. We kind of want to see it preserved so it sort of fits the character of the neighborhood. And I think this is a really great way to make sure the building is preserved, make sure that we know more or less what's going to be in there is either going to be a religious institution, at least for a while. I think that's great. I mean, I think it'll help alleviate the parking problems in the neighborhood. Weekends are not our problem. People go home on the weekends. But, like, having had to do work with heavy equipment where we get a permit from Building Safety to reserve parking spaces, some of those cars don't move for five days. They're only there to drive to Chicago on the weekends. So, you know, you show up on a Saturday or a Sunday, there's plenty of parking. Our issue is, you know, Monday through Friday. And I think with fewer kids buying those little stickers to park there, you know, all week long, I think it might actually help our situation with parking. So, yeah, and I guess from an economic development perspective, I'm excited to see something. You know, right now, we've got all these kids meeting at the Illini Union and I'm always wondering what can we do to suck some of these kids off-campus into either Champaign or Urbana and get them to put down some roots so that when they graduate with that $100,000 degree, they're not looking at Chicago, San Francisco, you know, Taiwan. Maybe they'll stay here and rent from us and buy things here and contribute to the community. So, if we can, you know, have a really cool church in a nice neighborhood, maybe they'll stay here, shop here, live here, and ultimately contribute to the community for a longer period of time. So, I'm excited about it from a few different angles. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And I would like to publicly thank Mr. Fasella for his investment in the house at 701 Ohio. I don't -- some of you may be familiar with it, but I would have sworn it was a tear-down and it's been like that for a decade or more, but maybe he wishes it was. But, he has transformed that property and it is an absolute jewel and he has restored it really to the original beauty that it was. So, thank you very much for your investment. Last for the public comments is Adam Rush from 212 West California.
Adam Rush from -- I live at 212 West California with my wife and I'm -- I know Ohio Street very well because I'm the grants director for the Beta Sigma Psi Educational Foundation. And our Alpha Chapter is at 706 West Ohio. And we didn't start off as a fraternity. We started off as a Bible study for Lutheran men. And we later joined the Greek system in order to gain official recognition from the university. And I see some parallels here with this organization as they are a church body that has also made a registered student organization and are now looking for a housing unit that they can live in together and have as their home base. Now, we worship a little differently than they do. They prefer an intimate home setting. We have our church in a larger structure, but I think that that speaks to the diversity that we can celebrate in our community of different ways that people live and worship and go about the neighborhood. I think that if you look at the way this organization will operate, it is actually very similar to a Greek organization. Greek organizations have members who live in the house and a lot of members, maybe two-thirds, are members who live out of house, members who come back for study tables and who come back for chapter meetings, just as this organization will have people coming back for their meetings and for their worship services. So, I'm very excited to see that there's a student organization, or at least, I should say, an organization that is ministering to the students of the University of Illinois that wants to own this property and wants to put money into it and invest in it. And I'd say that not only as a person who's a proponent of Ohio Street and our 100 years of Greek life on that street, but also as a person who is invested in the West Urbana neighborhood, because I'm always excited to see additional resources and excitement being put into the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to get this on the table and then we'll have discussion?
I'd like to make the motion then.
Second.
And this is ordinance 2018-04-027 approving a special-use permit, 713 West Ohio Street, owned by Frat Life LLC, having come from the planning case 2328-SU-18. And, yeah, I support that.
So, it's moved by Dennis, seconded by Eric. Discussion. Mary Alice.
All right. A little list of questions here. First, I want to talk a little bit about the noise ordinance. So, Jim, if you could chime in on this conversation. The first -- so, the noise ordinance exempts religious events, correct?
Religious activities.
Okay, so, religious activities. So, could somebody have a wedding here and that be exempt from the noise ordinance?
The ceremony probably would be exempt. There's a question in terms of whether the reception following the ceremony would be exempt. I can't give a definitive answer because I'm not familiar with what the receptions look like or how religiously based the receptions might be. It's very similar to the situation that we had with the chimes from the one church over by. And chimes are a whole separate thing, of course, in the noise ordinance, but the question there in part was, are the chimes religious chimes or are they just music? The fact that they emanate from a church doesn't necessarily make them religious music. So, there's -- again, you have to look at what the event is, but I would think the ceremony clearly would be, in a church, a religious ceremony. Again, I can't tell you about the reception. And then again, whether the reception in a church, I don't know whether receptions get rowdy or not.
Well, let me say one thing.
Yes, they do.
I think it's important for everybody to understand that what we're approving here is a special permit for any church. It's not the specific church. It is for any church because it transfers with the property, correct?
Well, I don't know when you say "any church."
The mayor's nodding her head and...
Well, I mean, obviously, I mean, if we are creating this use for this church and they choose to sell it in six years to another church, again, the ordinance has to be applied on a factual -- the noise ordinance on a factual basis. It's very hard with a religious organization to create a bright-line test without knowing the event.
Let me rephrase. I hear you, I do. I guess what I'm saying is, is that everything that we're talking about tonight is not with the specific church who is applying. Rather, it is for the use of the property as a church.
I understand that, but my comments would not change because, again, if it's a wedding ceremony in a church led by a presumably the clergy person or an invited clergy person in that church, I would consider that a religious ceremony. What happens after that, you know, I don't know. It could be everything from very stayed quiet to some out-of-hand reception totally unrelated to the religious practice of the practices of the church. Again, it's a fact-driven issue.
So, then my question comes to the actual conditions in the ordinance. There's been a lot of conversation about noise and whether or not it's a religious event, I guess I'll say. Is that fair? Okay.
Religious activities.
So, noise and hours are not included in this ordinance. There's a lot of conversation in the documentation about the hours of operation and so forth. So, I'm wondering if that is -- those two items could be hours with -- you can't do anything with noise, I understand that. But, in terms of hours of operation, is that something that we are legally allowed to add in here? It is in here?
Into which? I'm not sure.
Sorry. I'm looking at the actual ordinance. It says, "Special-use permit is hereby given to allow the church -- allow a church in the R7 University Residential Zoning District with the following conditions." And those following conditions are, "Construction with a general conformance of the attached site plan, occupancy rates for the main church Assembly Room and the special-use portion of the building, and the use and construction must conform to all applicable zoning, building, and developmental regulations." So, the thing that's missing there that I see is actually hours of operation.
Hours of operation of the church?
Yes. For church events. Is that -- can we legally put that in here?
That is not easily answered because I don't know whether churches hold their services -- whether some church -- I don't know about this one at all, but whether some churches hold events based on the hours. For example, midnight mass. There is a reason, I presume -- I'm not Catholic, but I presume there is a reason why Catholic Church holds a midnight mass at Christmas. And there may be other times where masses are held at particular times for particular reasons. I can't recite them.
So, what I'm hearing you say is, no, we cannot put the hours of operation in this as a special condition.
If they are tied to -- if a church, this one or some other church, has, you know, a religious reason for holding their services or some of their services at particular times, no, I don't think you can control that. You can control the level of noise, but I don't think you can put in as a special condition because now you're getting into the Establishment Clause and you're getting into exercises of religious speech.
But, you cannot control the hours and you cannot control the noise if it's a religious...
You can -- I think you can control the noise within reason. I'm not sure you can control the hours. When I did the research, I did not come across cases that dealt with hours of operation. But, again, I'm trying to figure out, not being Christian, being Jewish, that if hours -- if there's a reason for a service at a particular hour, not just convenience, but there is a religious reason. Now, Sunday at 11 o'clock, it can be very different than midnight mass at midnight.
There's a lot of conversation in this document in terms of the other groups that would attend, so there'll be small meetings, at least in this particular church instance. So, what I'm seeking to figure out is, let's put aside for the moment a congregation having a church service. Outside of the church service, if you're having Bible study, for example, until 10 o'clock at night, or 11 o'clock at night, or 9 o'clock at night, whatever, what I'm hearing you say is that is, we cannot put hours of operation on that.
I don't think you can. I think you can deal with the noise level, for instance. If, let's say, somebody decides to hold a Bible study in a patio courtyard outside in a small physical area, a small patio, and somebody decides to bring a rock band, then the question is, is it religious or is it social? That was the same issue with the bells. And you can draw -- it's hard to draw distinctions because, obviously, some churches use Christian rock music as part of their service. In the service, that would be clearly part of their religious activity. But, if they have a Christian rock band or a Jewish klezmer band or what have you out on the patio entertaining, it may be a cultural music, but is it religious? I don't know the songs they're playing. I don't know the interaction with the congregants. So, these are the kinds of questions that courts deal with on a case-by-case basis. There are no bright-line tests established by courts, especially in this area, especially in zoning regulation of religious houses of worship. That's what makes this very difficult.
Yeah, you know, I understand. I guess my major concern then is that for a residential area, and I'm looking at the Iowa, Ohio, Indiana area, we've got 1, 2, 3 on the north side of Ohio. It looks to me like being fraternities and sororities and that's it on those -- on those both sides of the Ohio and Iowa. If a resident was concerned about a party going on at one of the other fraternities, they could call the cops and say, "They're being too loud. I'm trying to sleep," you know, and it's a residential neighborhood, although that doesn't technically matter since it's a noise ordinance. They cannot do that on this particular property because it's -- well, they could, but it would be more difficult to figure out whether or not it was a religious activity or not. I guess -- so, my concern is, one of the big concerns of the neighbors is the amount of noise that could be generated. And in this case, they would have no recourse. That's what it sounds like to me.
It would be a hard call, especially for one of our officers who show up to the call regarding the large noise. Is he or she going to sit there and weigh, is this religious, is this social activities? It is hard, there's no question about it.
Okay. All right, I will let that lie for a moment. I have a couple of other questions, but I don't want to hog the stage here, so if other people want to ask some questions before I finish.
Eric?
I think whatever the zoning, you sort of are at the mercy of the luck of the draw as to whether you have good neighbors. I, you know, I alluded earlier to the fact that I may have more churches in my ward or houses of worship in my ward than maybe anybody else here. And they're fine. No, but I don't think anybody has complained about how lively things are coming out of Cane and Baptist Church or St. Pat's Cathedral or, you know, any of the mosque or any of the houses of worship in my ward. So, I kind of think most likely we'll be all right here.
Mary Alice? Did you have more?
Do I have to ask the rest of my questions? Okay. So, I had a question about the calculation of parking. So, the calculation of parking is split on two things. The first one is the number of residents in the -- I can't think of the word right now. People who are living there. So, you have 10. So, residents, thank you. So, you have five parking spaces, right? It's .5.
Yes.
And then you have 80 people who could attend, potentially attend, a ceremony, which would...
Who could occupy the main Assembly Hall.
Thank you. Who could occupy the main Assembly Hall. So, you multiply that by five or divide it by five, rather. Okay.
You get 16.
And you get 16. All right, so now we're at 21.
Yes.
Okay. So, my question is, how do you account for the other 10 people?
The zoning ordinance does not require dedicated parking spaces for ancillary activities, which is quite common. If you read through the parking section of the zoning ordinance, there are lots of uses that have combinations of activities, but they focus on the primary one. So, for a school, it looks at the number of seats in the auditorium. So for a school, it looks at the number of seats in the auditorium. It doesn't look at all at the office space. The analogous comparison would be, oh, so the principal doesn't deserve a parking space. Well, they do, but the assumption is that the seats in the auditorium act as a proxy for everything that's going on in the building. Otherwise, you would have staff looking at 35 different rooms in a building and figuring out what the uses are and putting together an aggregate amount, which we do for a few specific uses, but most of them rely on the primary use to determine what the overall parking requirement is.
Okay. All right. So for the moment, let's pretend that we can use the same formula, which is five, right? So then we're at 23. So we're one...
21.
No, we're at 21 right now.
Yes.
So if I apply the 10, I know you said I couldn't, but I'm just saying. So there's 80 people in the Assembly Hall, right, plus 10. So a total of 90 here. Not, Marshall should not exceed 90 persons, right? So I'm going to add two parking spaces.
I understand what you're, right.
Just for the moment. Okay. So we're 23 and we have 22, right? So we're one. It's not that much different, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay. So do we know how many people in that area pull parking permits? Because I know that somebody did a great study.
Yes, we do.
Yes. Do we know how many that is?
There are approximately, I think, 55 permits pulled in that area, maybe 55 to 65. It depends on what area you're looking at. That is not just, though, for that block. That was for the three group homes also to the west and the three group homes to the north. We have them, we can look at each individual address and know how many permits are pulled for that area. This house currently doesn't have any permits pulled for it.
Okay. So we'll just go less, say 50. 50 in the region, right? And do we know roughly how many? I'm trying to get a feel for the amount of traffic that's going to occur on Sundays or perhaps any other days. It sounds to me like the weekends might have less traffic congestion, at least based on one of the residents, but during the week is, there's a lot of traffic congestion, right? So I'm assuming if you have, we don't have 55 parking spaces on Ohio. Is that a good assumption? Or 50, let's just say?
I would not hazard a guess. We have that data, but that really is outside the bounds of the zoning ordinance's requirements for parking spaces.
Sure, sure.
So if, I guess the plan is, if this is going to be the rubric for determining whether a proposed use meets the requirements, then that really has to be applied across the board and we have to be talking about adjusting the zoning ordinance and having it change the way it calculates parking requirements.
So another use, so right now you have, people are going to be living there, you're going to have church services, but then they're also going to have open community, right? They're going to have open doors. People can come in and they can study and they can eat and so forth, right?
Which would presumably be happening outside the Sunday services.
Which would presum, yes, exactly.
Yes.
And I'm assuming that this occupancy clause applies to those groups as well?
The condition number three limits the total occupancy of the church portion of the building to 90 persons. So that could be up to 80 in the Assembly Hall, which is condition two, or it could be zero in the Assembly Hall and 90 anywhere else in the building.
So theoretically, it would also limit weddings?
Yes.
Bar mitzvahs?
If they're in the church portion of the building.
Okay, they're in the church portion, 90's cap.
If 10 of those attendees happen to be residents, though, and they're in the resident portion of the building, they would not be counted because...
Right, right, right. Absolutely. Okay. So then that says to me that there's a clear delineation between the church space and the residence space.
According to the exhibit that I showed you, those are the floor plans they, that would be submitted with the ordinance and they would be required to follow those.
And so the item number one here on the special use permit, I'm assuming that that's how we clarify what is church versus what is residence here.
Yes, correct.
So this exhibit E and exhibit F and so forth.
Yes, every room has a designation of either church or residence or shared.
So in that case, in terms of the residency area, there's been a lot of conversation in terms of how many people are allowed to live there by right. So with the residency area, how many people are allowed to live there by right?
That is outside the scope of this special use permit because it's permitted by right. There are, and that would be handled by building safety, from the number of unrelated persons.
Sure. Well, that doesn't matter with this type of building, correct?
I would not be able to speak to that.
Okay.
But the parking would be limited. They have five parking spaces. So if the concern is about parking versus if the concern is about occupancy, this procedure is not addressing the occupancy of the residential portion of the building. So I can't really speak to that.
My last question is in terms of, there's conversation in terms of, how do you determine if there's X number of people in the building? And if somebody's concerned, they can call the fire department, they can call 911 and then ask for the fire chief to come out and count the people. Is that correct?
They would call the fire marshal. They would not call 911.
Oh, and the document says 911. But that's okay. They would call the fire marshal.
I said somewhere that you call 911?
Yes.
My apologies then.
That was high interruption there. They could call 911. 911 would contact the fire.
Okay. Is it corrected?
No, no, no worries. So, okay. So you call 911, they, make habit, contact the fire marshal. The fire marshal would come out, count the people, say 100 people are in the building that day. Obviously, they get a warning or something, say, "Can't have 100 people here." How many times does that have to occur?
That would be up to the zoning administrator.
And who is the zoning administrator?
Lori Pearson.
Lori, how many times would that have to occur?
It's not as though that's defined in the zoning ordinance. Theoretically, it could be just once because they're not meeting the conditions. Whether or not that's actually the case, obviously, there's some room for discussion there. But in order to not have, or in order to have a special use permit that's valid, you need to comply with the conditions. And so what would actually happen in that case with the fire marshal coming out is that they would have everyone exit and they would only let 90 people back in.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Do you have a question?
No, I have a...
I have a further comment for you, but give me one second to find the citation. Under the Protection of Religious Exercise in Land Use Act essentially, which can be found at 42 United States Code, Section 2000 CC, one of the provisions, I think, pretty well addresses your concern about noise and especially the surrounding activities. Subsection B.2 says, "No government shall impose or implement a land use regulation that discriminates against any assembly or institution on the basis of religion or religious denomination." So we could not put a limitation on noise, for instance, different than what's already in the area. And that is partly why we, Marcus and I discussed this and Lori discussed this, and we decided to allow the city's noise ordinance to apply because it applies equally across this whole area as well as the rest of the city.
All right. Thank you. Are we ready to vote? Discussion.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is a good adaptive reuse. I think there's, you know, there's always the risk that nothing happens there and then it sits empty for six or seven years like one of the other nearby sororities did and end up with boarded up windows and people using it for things they shouldn't be using it for. I think this one is probably in better condition than that one was, although apparently it only took a year or two of the wrong fraternity using that one to put it in bad condition. So I think there's always a risk there. I think it's probably functionally obsolete or Jonah probably would have tried to fix it up or put in another five or 10 bathrooms, however many bathrooms people want these days, one per bedroom, and try to rent it out to a smaller group at higher prices or something like that. But apparently, this is the most efficient way to reuse it. I live a block from Lille School where we have 400 students and several dozen staff members come every day. And it's residential on all sides. And I just consider it part of living in an active, walkable place where there are people. That's why, that's one of the things I like about living in my neighborhood. So I think, you know, people are a little over-concerned about activity of people being there. I think it's one of the things that makes our neighborhood better, actually. I think that's about, I mean, I can't really think of too many negatives. I did, I think at the very beginning when I was looking at this, I thought it would be a lower intensity use, but seeing how active this church is, I think it probably is a little bit higher intensity use than what the current use is, although the current use could be a lot higher if you had 20 or 40 people in there like it used to have. So it may be a little bit more intensive use, but I think in general, it will be fewer late-night problems and probably a cleaner, nicer amenity to the neighborhood.
Any other comments? Dennis?
Yeah. I generally try to support adaptive reuse also. The historic texture of the neighborhood, I think, is important. If the building couldn't be used appropriately and also generate some income for the, for the organization, there would be a concern that I would have. I think that in the future, if there are issues, they might come again before complaint bodies, including, you know, fire or zoning or police or whatever, to inquire and make adjustments, if necessary, to some of the things that we're agreeing to if we do so tonight. So I, I'm kind of cautiously in favor of this and I think I'd like to see this at least go down the road a couple of years and then come back and find out if we've learned anything from the experience.
Mary Alice?
I'm torn with this one because I agree with, I agree in terms of adaptive reuse. I think that we really need to be thinking hard about, what are we going to do with these larger homes? I struggle with the fact that, and I understand Bill talking about Lille. My kids went to Lille. We walked to Lille. There's loud bells at the beginning of the day and so forth. But the truth of the matter is, is that school has been there for many, many years. And so when you bought the house, you expected that school to be there and all of the traffic and everything that comes with it. In terms of this reuse of a property, do the residents actually expect to have this type of property there? And I would say, no. I don't think that they expected that when they lived there. The largest thing that concerns me is not the church that is proposing to buy it. The largest thing that concerns me are the types of activities and the amount of traffic and the amount of activity that's going to happen in any church that's going to be in a very residential area. So for that reason, I'm going to have to vote no.
Eric?
In my ward, we've had seven houses of worship for decades. Not a problem. We had one fraternity house for two years that caused more trouble in those two years than those seven houses of worship did put together in the decades. So I will vote yes.
Anyone who wishes to speak who hasn't yet spoken on this? Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmember Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazlum?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
No.
That motion passes. Last item on the agenda is ordinance number 2018-04-028, which is an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year 2018. It's a budget amendment number seven to accept the overtime grant for the distracted driving grant that we, that you passed earlier this evening.
I move approval.
Second.
Who was that?
Bill.
Bill? You're going to have to say your names when you do this. Moved approval by Bill, seconded by Aaron. Was that Aaron?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? All those, will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hazlum?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Marley?
Yes. That motion passes. Aaron?
I just wanted to take a moment before we get out of here to announce again to the public and to all those who's watching that there will be an MLK 50 celebration, celebrating the life and legacy of Dr. King as we commemorate the 50-year anniversary of his assassination. April 4th, 2018 will be the 50-year mark at Pilgrim Missionary Baptist Church. 5:30 to 6:00, there will be light food and refreshments. From 6:00 to 8:00, there will be a program that's 13, I believe it's 1310 North Sixth Street in Champaign. So again, come on out, celebrate with the community as we listen to parts of Dr. King's final speech. I've been to the mountaintop and take from that speech some guidance as to what we can do in our communities to keep them safe and to bring about the changes we want in our community. So that's April 4th, this Wednesday, from 5:30 to 6:00 at Pilgrim Missionary Baptist Church, and all are welcome.
Thank you.
One more.
Dennis?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank all those people who sent an email or signed a card of condolences for the passing of my mom and appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Well, with no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.